Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special Town Hall meeting of the Board of Public Works today, Monday, June 13th, 2016, from Cheviot Hills Recreation Center. Before we formally officially officially get started on the meeting, I wanted to let you know our Executive Officer Fernando Campos is distributing public comment cards. If you are interested in speaking on items that are not related to items that are already posted on the agenda, that's when you can go ahead and fill out a speaker card and we're happy to accept those. So if you're interested in speaking on an item that is not posted on the agenda today, please fill out a public speaker card. Okay. So Fernando, you want to? So Fernando, would you please take roll call?
Absolutely. Vice President Davis, I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis, Vice President Rodriguez, Commissioner Repending, and Commissioner has sent to our President, Vice President Rodriguez, we do have a quorum. For those members that are joining us today, good evening. Fernando Campos, Executive Officer, very pleased to be out here in Council District Number Five. If you would like to address the board today, I did distribute some comment cards or speaker cards, there are some extra in the back of the room as well. We will allow up to two minutes per person to speak. At this point, I have not received any speaker cards under general public comment, however, if you'd like to do so, please approach me and also present your card and we will get you in the queue. We will allow two minutes to speak to the board, up to an aggregate total of 30. Here's my number one, thank you, Ms. In addition to that, we do have a series of six or seven presentations that are scheduled for today's agenda. We will have a question and answer segment. At the discretion of our Vice President, we will allow five minutes for Q and A after each presentation. During that time, if you do have a question, just raise your hand and we will come up to you and we will take your question and respond accordingly.
Thank you, Fernando. And so we have the tremendous honor of having with us this evening our distinguished Councilman for the Fifth District, Mr. Paul Coretts. Councilman, thank you so much for joining us this evening. And the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you and welcome everybody to CD5. And I appreciate the board holding this special meeting in my district. We're glad to have the board meet all of you and listen to your concerns and answer any questions or listen to any good ideas you might have about policies that the city is working on. From a historical outlook, the first attempt to create a Board of Public Works was in 1872. The City of Los Angeles created a five-member board at the time. It supervised the activities of two operating department heads, the Street Superintendent and the City Surveyor. Each were appointed by the mayor back then, and in 1882, those became elective offices. In 1906, the powers that be in the city realized that was pretty silly and they became appointed offices again, which they remained until they were changed to other positions. The size of the board fluctuated between three and five members for a number of years. The city charter in 1925 formalized that and made it a permanent five-member board. And today, the LA Board of Public Works continues to be a five-member group. They are an executive team that administers the department and is the lead in directing 5,400 employees who are responsible for design and construction and renovation, operation of public projects from bridges to wastewater treatment plants to libraries, curbside collection and graffiti removal, maintenance of streets and sidewalks, sewers, streetlights and trees, and all kinds of other stuff. And unlike other departments that have a general manager, this department is run by a full-time board. And I can tell you and any of you that are here from my district probably know that more than half of our calls to our district offices relate to public works in some way, especially about street trees, streets and sidewalks. We get a lot of those calls. And it is great to have the Director of each bureau with us tonight to be able to describe exactly what their office does. I also want to highlight some things that we've worked on with the department. We have worked on increasing funding for graffiti abatement for the whole city in this year's budget by over a million dollars. Secondly, we'll be spending $1.3 billion over the next three decades to finally fix our embattled sidewalks. Before that, I think we were on a replacement of pattern of about 90 years or so, I forget exactly what it was, but it meant that nobody was getting their sidewalks replaced in a timely manner. So that will definitely change. We originally talked about doing a fix and release, so we would fix it and then it would immediately be the resident's responsibility. I was one of the people that thought that was a bad idea, so instead, it's a fix and release, but those sidewalks have to remain good for at least 20 years first. And after that, it becomes the responsibility of the resident and residential areas. Also, I've pushed for us to be careful as we do this sidewalk program because many of these sidewalks have been damaged by trees, that we also be judicious in our removal of trees because if we remove too many, we're already facing a very hot future and we could increase Los Angeles and its heat island effect and effectively cook ourselves if we take out too many trees. So we will presumably be very judicious and careful that we maintain a large number of mature trees to help give us shade, cool the city and capture rainwater. We also have to look at what we do with water. The future of our water system is uncertain at best, especially since it looks like our drought may be a semi-permanent condition. So it's critical that we look at our rainwater and our treated water and look at that as a potential source of water for the future, which we haven't done a good job of capture and use in the past. So that's a critical thing that I think we need to look at as well. So I thank you all for coming tonight. It's a rare opportunity when we get to meet with all the leaders in one department, especially one as critical to the city and its future as this one. It certainly is one of the more important departments in our city and it's vital that you know who they are and what they do, and so this is a great opportunity. And I'm grateful that they've all come to our district to share their expertise. So thank you again for coming. And before I finish up, I do want to make one presentation in gratitude for the great graffiti removal work that we have gotten here in Council District Five. I'd like to present a certificate to Pacific Graffiti Solutions. Yvette, if you'd come up and... Lastly, I should introduce my staff who are here. Joan Pellico, my Chief of Staff. Garmit Kara, Mike Valley Director. Joseph Galloway, one of my field staff. And Philip Bennett, who's my field staff person for this area. So thank you all for being here and I look forward to a very interesting meeting.
Thank you so much, Councilman. We're happy that you're here to join us. I do wanted to make note that unfortunately, our President Kevin James was not able to join us this evening because of the vigil that's being held at City Hall this evening in remembrance of the victims of the Orlando massacre tragedy. And so if I would actually ask your indulgence and if we could please have a moment of silence to remember those victims. Thank you. Mr. Campos, could we please, my apologies, we did not get through the introductions of our staff that are here this evening with us, and so I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge our general managers and staff that are here with us this evening.
Good evening, Mark Starr, Bureau of Sanitation.
Good evening, Ted Jordan, Public Works General Counsel.
Good evening, John Reamer, Bureau of Contract Administration.
Good evening, Alfred Mata with the Bureau of Engineering.
Good evening, Greg Spotts with Bureau of Street Services.
Good evening, Ed Ibrahimian, Street Lighting.
Thank you. So we did receive two speaker cards under general public comment, so we'll go ahead and take those items right now. If we could please have Susan Gordon pull the comment, thank you.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I am speaking about something that's personal to me on my street. It's street resurfacing. I have lived at 10264 Rochester Avenue since 1987, and in that time, the street has never been resurfaced. Not only that, but when I did follow through with someone from Councilman's office, I can't remember who at the moment, she replied that she looked into it, the street had not been resurfaced since 1948. And grass is growing through the remaining asphalt, it's very torn up, there's no even slurry along the curb. It really looks terrible and it's a lovely neighborhood. I just would like some advice about how to go about asking for it to be resurfaced or what the options are, what hope I might have of having it done in my lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker card is with Brian Ellenberger.
Hi, I'm Brian Ellenberger. I have a property in Council District Five and also 11. And basically, it's a general question for the city in regards to the street medians and how horrible they look. Specifically, La Cienega coming from the airport, north of Centinela and south of Slauson, and I have photos to show you. So basically, my question is, I think all the street medians in the city just look pretty bad. They put all new medians in on Pico and nobody keeps them up, so, general question.
Thank you. So under, just to Mr. City Attorney, I just wanted to explain, under general public comment, we can't engage in question and answers, but we can talk about these, some of these items that we're going to cover on the posted agenda items later in the program. So just wanted to be clear. Our next speaker card is Jean Parker.
I am Jean Parker. I've lived in Palms for over 40 years, and I am a homeowner, voter, and also a taxpayer, a U.S. citizen. Now, recently, and I'm so glad that Yvette was given this honor, Yvette is strapped for money. She is short of staffed, and as a result, we have situations in Palms that we've never had before. We have gang activity, which is very unusual. And as a result, I'm asking for more funding for Yvette, Pacific Graffiti Solutions and her staff. And she does a very effective job, obviously, but she can't continue if this sort of negligence on the city's part of not giving her adequate funding. Secondly, we have a hotspot called Isamb Dufresne. Dufresne is one block east of Sepulveda, and you enter on Venice. That has now become a really hotspot for gang activity. We've called in gang units and they are working on it. However, this place, again, attracts a lot of graffiti because Yvette is shorthanded and she's not able to come to our rescue as quickly as she, as her staff should. But also, we found out today that there is street sweeping on Wednesdays and Thursdays. When I asked a prominent resident over there, Carmina Castillo, "Do you ever see a street sweeper there?", and she said, "No", and she knows that it should be there Wednesdays and Thursdays. And I said, "What about parking enforcement?", she said, "It doesn't happen." Now, that is the reason for gang activity. It's a small area, it's a dead-end street, and it shows that, yes, this is a haven for these hoodlums. So please, let's check into Dufresne. It's a dead-end street, one block east of Sepulveda, you enter on Venice, it's on the north side of Venice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Our next speaker card is Kimberly Ross.
I'm talking about Maraga Drive. I've seen some activity from street services regarding a tree that sits in front of 850 Maraga Drive, and it's been going on for two years and nothing's happened since then, so I've not seen any progression other than looking loose from the city. Ultimately, the tree is leaning and the surface, the street sidewalk, is very high and is very dangerous, and I've seen a couple of people fall, so I don't want it to become a major issue where it becomes a litigation issue at this point, but it's really bad. I'd like to have someone come over there and look at it. I don't know who's Councilman Coretts' office, so please, can we have someone come over there and take a look at it? It's really bad. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Executive Officer, do we have any additional speaker cards?
No additional speaker cards.
Okay, so we will go ahead and close general public comment and move on to our first item of, item on the agenda. We have one more presentation this evening. Jason Valencia from our Office of Community Beautification. Now it's our turn to recognize the wonderful work of Pacific Graffiti Solutions. Jason.
Ms. Vice President, before you continue on the presentation, to those members of the audience and community, if you'd like to also connect with our directors, you have an esteemed group of panelists that are here tonight in your district. These are individuals, directors at our bureau levels that are here to provide the services. We will provide contact information for you either through the presentation or at the end of the session, so please, please, if you do have questions or do you need to connect with someone, i.e. sidewalks or street repairs or tree trimming services, et cetera, please look out for those items on the agenda and also look out for the contact information that will be provided during those presentations. If you do miss it, we can always provide you that information. I will have my business cards up in the front and we will make sure to connect you with the right individuals.
Thank you. Jason.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Good evening, folks. Thank you Councilmember Coretts and staff, CD3, I'm sorry, CD5 community for having us out here this evening. I also want to present a certificate of recognition to Yvette Neal and the Pacific Graffiti Solutions staff. These folks do an amazing job of graffiti abatement, weed abatement as well in the community, and we cannot thank them enough. Thank you.
But I would also like to take a moment, Yvette, and I know you have been an outstanding advocate for this area, and I know we've, you and I have worked very closely together on addressing a lot of the challenges that not just Pacific Graffiti Solutions has encountered in their role handling graffiti abatement in the city, but addressing a lot of the larger concerns that some of the other contractors have experienced as well. And so, you know, you've been an outstanding part of this collaborative effort that we've had as a board, working with our OCB contractors to help ensure that we're making the best and most efficient use of taxpayer dollars. And so we're working on getting her more. As Councilman Coretts, as Councilman Coretts indicated, there's been a larger effort to making sure that we are allocating as much as we can in the budget to try and help continue to address this growing challenge that we have, and they've done an outstanding job. And so thank you for your work. And so to the public, and I just wanted to acknowledge really quickly, as Fernando mentioned, the purpose of a Town Hall format was to ensure that, you know, when we are coming out to the community and we were having our traditional Board of Public Works meetings, it really restricts our ability to engage with you in a conversation about the types of things that we can do to help address a lot of the challenges that you might be facing in your community. So that's why this is a bit of a different format, where we've allowed for each of our bureaus to provide a presentation on some of the most current projects that we have happening in those bureaus, and then it allows each of you to have an opportunity to ask questions and engage in this in a very different way than we would otherwise have the ability to do so in a traditional format. So thank you all for being here with us this evening, and we will go to our first oral report, which is the overview of street services, which is improvements, repairs, sweeping and tree trimming. And we have with us today, who's doing, who's conducting our, Greg Spotts.
Would you like me to do it from over there or over here?
Whichever you feel most comfortable.
Oh, okay, well, this way I can see everybody. Good evening, everyone. I'm Greg Spotts. I'm one of the three Assistant Directors of the Bureau of Street Services. Our director couldn't be here, but I've done many of these meetings and I'm happy to help you. After my presentation, we'll have a little Q and A, and then I'm happy to, you know, meet anyone who wants to talk with me personally over there in the corner. I can give you my business card and we can get in touch and work on your issue. The Bureau of Street Services, we have about 1,050 authorized positions. We're hiring, if you know anyone who is looking for an entry-level construction job. We have, you know, several hundred vacant positions that we've finally been granted the ability to hire for, so it's an exciting time if you're interested in becoming a city employee. We have four core programs at our agency. The largest one is the pavement preservation program, and that's the program that actually, oh, thank you. Okay, great. That actually maintains the road surface. That's more than a $100 million program. That's more than half of our budget. And then another program, that's a core program, is the motor sweeping program. We're predominantly on posted street sweeping routes. Once a week, we run a motor sweeper down the street, down the curb lane to collect debris. That also keeps our storm drains from having that debris, you know, wash into them. Our third core program is urban forestry. There's about 700,000 street trees in the city, and it's our job to maintain them and the resources to do that keep coming back since the budget crisis, and so we're beginning to really be able to do the kind of scale of that work that we'd like to be doing. And our fourth core program is enforcement. We actually have about 60 uniformed police officers that work for us doing quality of life issues. So the kind of small issues that, you know, the uniform LAPD might find too small to work on, like an illegal discharge of water or someone's vegetation that's growing into the sidewalk, we have a set of investigators who can come out, cite people. We also enforce illegal dumping rules. So that's our fourth key program. So the pavement preservation program has won a number of awards. We won an award last year, a national award, because we run it via a computer system, really. We inspect every segment, there's 69,000 city blocks, and we inspect every one of them once every three years with a van that has all these sophisticated sensors. And then engineers look at that data and assign a grade, a pavement condition index grade of 0 to 100 to that segment. And this computer system called MicroPaver tells us when it's time to pave a segment before it's likely to fall into the next more expensive category of repairs. So we don't do worst first, we don't do the oldest ones first, we don't do the ones that, you know, the most politically connected people want to be done. We actually do the streets that the computer system says would be the most cost-effective way to spend our funds. We've been receiving more and more funds. Mayor Garcetti has shown tremendous leadership in helping us grow this program, as has our board here and the city council. Last year, we completed 2,400 lane miles of pavement preservation, which is the highest we've ever done in the history, 100-year history of our agency. And we're doing another 2,400 miles this year, and we just got funded to do another 2,400 miles next year. The computer system tells us we need to do about 2,000 lane miles just to keep the road system from declining on an average condition. And so for the last two years, we've actually been doing more than what was needed to keep it from declining, meaning we're slowly making it a little bit better. So of those 2,400 lane miles, 855 are resurfacing, where we actually mill off one to two inches of the asphalt-wearing surface and install new asphalt, and 1,545 lane miles are protective slurry seal, which is about an eighth to a quarter of an inch, which is almost like a raincoat for the street. It keeps water out, which protects the base from degrading. And we do that on streets that are in good condition, which extends their life, meaning we don't have to come and resurface them as often. We also have a large-scale pothole operation. We run 10 to 12 pothole trucks, Monday to Friday, around the city. And we've been working very hard to optimize the street pothole turnaround time, and over the past two years, we've reduced it from eight to nine days to two to three working days. So if you use the MyLA311 app or you call 311, you call in a pothole on a Monday, we're likely to have completed it by Thursday. So that's something that we're very excited about. If you're interested in learning more about the condition of our street system, we have two resources. We have a tri-annual state of the streets report that we published in October of last year that you can download on our website. We also have a color-coded map of every one of those 69,000 blocks. You can type in your address, you can find out what the PCI, what the pavement condition index of your street is right now. Speaking of potholes, we provide a pothole truck to every one of the 99 neighborhood councils twice a year to do the small asphalt repairs that the community wants. It's just supplemental, oh, there it is, here's the next slide, there it is. It's just supplemental to the regular repairs we're doing by people who call 311. You don't have to wait until we come for the Neighborhood Council blitz, but it's a way for the Neighborhood Councils to be empowered to program repairs that they want to see. And this has been going on since the very beginning of the Garcetti administration. We launched this second month, July of 2013, and so we're just completing our sixth round of visits. And next year, we hope to add a couple of other optional services into the mix for those neighborhood councils that have already kind of gotten to all their small asphalt repairs and may need some other types of repairs. So among our other services, we do proactive tree trimming, mostly using city contractors. We trim trees and grids, that's much more efficient than, you know, mobilizing to one particular address to trim one tree. We trim all the trees on a block and then we keep moving through the grid. We have about $5 million in contracted tree trimming every year, and then the city forces are doing about a million as well. We do trim individual trees when there's an emergency, and that's defined as either a safety hazard the tree is posing or that there's not clearance for, you know, a fire truck in the curb lane or for the pedestrians in the sidewalk. So if you have a situation like that, call 311 or use the MyLA311 smartphone app and we'll get right out there and remove that obstruction for you. Like I said, we have uniformed police officers who enforce violations in the public right-of-way, like illegal signs that you can see in the upper right there. And we have the motor sweeping program, which is really becoming more effective now that we've been able to hire. There was a hiring freeze in the city for a number of years after the budget crisis, and our agency, like many, has an aging population of workers. About half of our workers are eligible to retire in the next five years. So now that, about a year ago, we were able to begin the hiring process, and in January, we took on 30 motor sweeper operators, we got another 10 coming on, so we're getting up to our authorized staffing levels and being able to provide more service. Something we're very excited about is the sidewalk program. 10 years ago, we had 99 people at the Bureau of Street Services building sidewalks. Two years ago, we had zero. This year, we have 39, and we're going to have 70 next year. We're going to have five crews building sidewalks all the time, which we're very, very happy to be doing. This year was the launch of the program, and most of the work, BOE is the program manager, the Bureau of Engineering, they're going to tell you a lot more about it in a subsequent presentation tonight, but they gave us packages of work, and the first package they gave us was a number of parks and fire stations to fix the sidewalk around city facilities. The city's the property owner, it's certainly the city's responsibility, so we caught up on some of that work. And actually, my personal favorite... And actually, my personal favorite project of the year is here in CD5. It's something that we partnered with Councilmember Coretts on to build sidewalk just north of the Sepulveda Expo Phase II light rail station. Believe it or not, you know, the $1.5 billion light rail was going in, and on one side of the street, on the west side of Sepulveda, there was no sidewalk to get to the station. And it just had to do with the kind of industrial uses that had been put there before. And Councilmember Coretts was able to get the Expo project to contribute some money, and we found some money in the sidewalk program. And our crew just finished it days before Expo opened. And that was just one of the ones I thought was personally really rewarding. We do a number of other concrete improvements. We build about $15 million a year in grant-funded streetscape projects. So, you know, at times, the community gets together with city staff in a department, and they find money, discretionary money, from a competitive grant. And what our agency does, which is kind of unusual, is design-build. We have a small staff of engineers and landscape architects who can design the project, and then our construction forces can build it. And so you don't have to bring on a consultant, get a full plan set made, do a whole bid and award process to, you know, award that to a contractor. So we have a unique and very rapid way to deliver these streetscape improvement projects. And this year that we're just finishing, at the end of this month, we'll have completed $17 million of such projects this year. We also build bus pads. That's a way to prevent that asphalt shoving that you see when the bus starts and stops in the same place all the time. Those are hard to repair, and you have to keep visiting them over and over again. So gradually, we're installing concrete landing spaces for the bus. And we also, sometimes when we're doing that, we're able to install a sidewalk next to the bus stop there. Believe it or not, there's bus stops all around the city where there's no sidewalk, where people are standing on tree roots and standing on dirt. So we build, you know, a little bit less than 100 bus landings every year. And as you know, there's still corners in the city that don't have ADA ramps at the corner, and we're building more than 1,000 of those every year. One of the programs that Mayor Garcetti has that we really love is the Great Streets program, where there's a designated corridor in each of the 15 council districts for enhanced services. We've had a lot of fun learning some new tricks in how to maintain these places. In the upper left, you'll see the Reseda Cycle Track, which was the first parking-protected bike lane that was installed in the city last year. And because it's so narrow, we had to acquire a mini street sweeper in order to keep that clean. So this is the first mini sweeper that we've ever had, and we couldn't even find other municipalities locally that had one. And so we put it on a little trailer. Every Friday morning, we sweep there, and then we bring it to the Second Street Bike Tunnel, the Second Street Tunnel that also has a bike lane that has plastic delineators protecting it. And we're just about to open next week, the Los Angeles Street Cycle Track. My FIG project is coming. So as there's more and more of these facilities, we're probably going to end up operating more mini sweepers. So that's something that's pretty neat. Also, you know, the Great Streets corridor here in CD5 is Westwood, that wonderful Westwood, you know, neighborhood, you know, shopping area. And they have a business improvement district there, so they have a lot of neat streetscape features. And they asked us to concentrate our efforts with our specialty Great Streets crew this year on this area, you can see in the upper right, where there was a tree in that tree well that the roots had pushed up the sidewalk. And they had this very unique decorative treatment, sort of like colored concrete that looks like tiles. And we were able to replicate it. It was fun that our guys were able to get creative and match the color and make it look exactly like what they had before. We're also repairing, you know, crushed catch basins. We're bringing tree wells back up to grade by filling them with DG. We're also expanding tree wells when we can take a concrete slab off along the curb line. So we have a lot of neat work going on in the Great Streets. And my last slide is about some of the technology and sustainability initiatives we have going on. We've just completed a collaboration with the General Services Department to put live GPS on our 100 motor sweepers. Now we know where they are all the time. That's going to really help us with operational efficiencies. But we also hope to be able to work with Department of Transportation in the future to build on that and perhaps find a way to let you park after the sweeper goes by. And maybe one day, there can be an app that gives you a red light or green light telling you whether the sweeper... You still have to wait, or whether, you know, we can free up that parking inventory as soon as the sweeper goes by. So that's... This is going to be a data platform on which DOT can build. On the upper right, there's a photo just showing how we're now using tablets to inspect the street potholes. I don't know if you know this, but the city launched a new computer system to receive all the service requests, called the CRM. And we figured out that you could access the CRM directly with mobile devices. And so we've equipped the 24 people who inspect street potholes with these mobile devices, and now they have a paperless workflow. And the really exciting part is we... One of our guys came up with this innovation that turned out to be a terrific practice, where when he was rolling up on a pothole, he'd requery the system to see if any new potholes had cropped up nearby. And by doing that, we're able to inspect now more than half of the potholes the same day they're called in, which wasn't possible before because our investigators used to print out a stack of service requests in the morning and then just go inspect those. And they didn't have any live connection with the evolving data stream, and now we do. So that's really neat. We were able to fund that with a Mayor Garcetti Innovation Fund grant of $90,000. I was the applicant for that grant, so I'm very proud of that innovation effort. Also, we were testing out CoolPavement, a lighter-colored coating you can see in the lower left, to see if that would make it, the buildings nearby, more pleasant and cooler in the summer. We installed that off-street, to be very conservative. We partnered with Wreckin' Parks to put it in a park in the valley. And we had general services test it, and they found it was 10 degrees cooler on a hot summer afternoon than the regular black asphalt. So we have a small program for the next fiscal year to put this on one block in every one of the 15 council districts. We can find neighbors who want to try it. It may end up marking more than the black pavement. And if they don't like it, we can slurry seal it over at the end. But we're going to give it a try and see if it might reduce people's air conditioning bills in the summer. Lastly, we have a very... We have two city-owned asphalt plants, and the one in downtown LA is very old. It was commissioned right after World War II, and it looks like it. That's a picture of it right there. And we just, working with our friends at Bureau of Engineering, we just awarded a contract to reconstruct that plant from the ground up with the most modern technology. And we're going to be able to have 50% recycled content asphalt, meaning we're going to take all the asphalt that we peel off, the old asphalt, and throw it in the mix and turn it into new. And that avoids us having to buy $8 million a year of rock, sand, and oil. So that means more money to pave more streets. So that's been sort of a lifelong dream of the people who run our agency. Our Director has been working on that for more than 10 years, and we're so excited to be launching that. Finally, we're... You can get to us a million different ways now. You can call 311, which is the old-fashioned way. You can visit that link up there to enter a service request self-serve on your computer. You can use the new MyLA311 app, smartphone app, that's available for Apple and for Android. You can tweet at us. You can contact us through Facebook. Or you can Shanghai me in about five minutes over there in the corner, and you can get my business card, and I'm delighted to help you as well. So with that, we're happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Greg. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have five minutes allocated for any questions that you might have that... Yes.
Thank you for being here, Commissioners, and thank you, Board. Thank you, Greg. Good to see you again. Just had two questions that a constituent wanted me to ask you. The first one is with regards to sidewalks. How do they go about reporting it? Is it usually with 311, or will it be a direct request from our office? And then the second question I was asked to relate to you is, has the Bureau considered any research on porous cement or porous sidewalks for stormwater retention?
Thank you. Yeah, let me take that second one first. Of the 12 city facilities where we installed new sidewalk this year, one of them we did in pervious concrete, which allows water to infiltrate. It's something we're still testing. It may be better suited for places where it rains more often because here, it'll be dry for so long that dust and dirt can accumulate in there, and then you might need to clean it. And we're not really sure we'd be able to fund people to come out and vacuum the sidewalk so that it could remain pervious, but we're definitely giving it a try. I think the sidewalk question is best answered in the next, or one of the presentations that's coming because if you call 311, we will come and inspect the sidewalk and just put a temporary asphalt ramping there to reduce the trip-and-fall hazard. But the front door to the sidewalk program will end up being the Bureau of Engineering, and then they'll package up a whole bunch of projects for us to do as the contractor. So they'll speak to that in more detail.
Thank you. Yes.
I also have a couple of quick questions. One is, I've reported a dead pine tree on the northeast corner of Coventry and Westwood several months ago. If it falls, it's going to take the wires out. Your crew was out there. I asked them to look at it. Nobody did anything, so I'm reporting it again. It's not in front of a house, so there's no address. Northeast corner of Coventry. It's on Coventry. It's on the north side, just east of Westwood Boulevard. Secondly, I was wondering if your small mini street sweeper could be used to sweep some of the sidewalks, especially under the freeway overpasses. The sidewalk is very wide, and it tends to collect a lot of crud, just dirt and whatever, and they never, ever get cleaned. Westwood National Boulevard, under the 405, lots of places in round. And thirdly, many of these departments are working together on our Greenway, Westwood Greenway project, which is right next to the... On either side of the new Westwood Expo Station. And I would really like to encourage any action and movement on that at all. Right now, we have some really fabulous weeds. And I don't know who is going to be dealing with those weeds because they're not really trees to trim. Likewise, west of Westwood Boulevard, on the south side of exposition, the metro right-of-way is being maintained, but there's a bit of street right-of-way that has planting and also has a large number of weeds in it that would be fabulous if we could get cleaned up. Thank you.
Do you want me to address each of those? Real quick, or... Okay.
I think on the service request ones, we just note the service request.
Sure.
If you can succinctly respond, if you had a response for anything, or...
Sure, real quick. I'll have that dead tree looked at. There's a huge backlog of dead trees, particularly because of this virus that's moving around the city from tree to tree. And we were very happy to get, in the new fiscal year's budget, a specialty tree removal crew. That's something we've been asking for for several years, and that's really going to help us because it's... Up till now, it was the same crews that are handling daily emergencies that we're trying to also do removals. And we really do need a crew just hunting down those removals. There's a big backlog of them, and we're concerned about them. The... Generally, we don't have a sidewalk cleaning program, and the cleanliness of the sidewalk is actually the responsibility of the property owner. Those underpasses are complicated because it could be Caltrans. And I'll give you my card after, and if you email me these locations, I'll try to have them inspected, and we'll try to figure out whose responsibility that would be. And I'm very familiar with the Expo Greenway. In a previous job, I was working on trying to advance that project, and I love that project. And I'll try to do some research about how that strip of city land outside the metro right-of-way is going to be maintained in the meantime.
Yeah, I just wanted to reinforce that the part under the sidewalks, under the freeways, it's not really the city. It's not really Caltrans. It's like this little, you know, demilitarized zone.
We do have a variety of areas like that, where the maintenance responsibility is a little bit convoluted.
Thank you. Are we... Okay, we have time for one more question. Yes.
Right, I mean, I guess commercial property owners often hire a company to come do that from time to time, or they just use a hose and do the best they can. But, you know... Right. I mean, the California state law says the maintenance of the day-to-day, cleanliness of the sidewalk is the responsibility of the property owner, and we're not funded... Really, when we had 1,700 people in this Bureau, we did a lot of hand cleaning. And now that we have, you know, 900 actual people working there, other than the motor sweeping, we really don't have other, you know, cleaning resources at this point.
Okay, thank you. Could we actually... Could we address your question after we're going to start getting through the rest of our presentations? Because we're already running a bit behind on the presentations. Thank you, Greg. We will now go to the oral report from our Bureau of Street Lighting Improvements and Technology, Fabian Cheng.
Good evening, Commissioners, Bureau Representatives. Fabian Cheng with the Bureau of Street Lighting. I'm going to provide a brief presentation about some of our latest improvements and technology that the Bureau is currently working on. We do have copies of this presentation on the back table for those who wish to take one and follow along with the projection. The Bureau of Street Lighting is in charge of the design, maintenance, and construction of all the street lighting systems in the city of Los Angeles. We're responsible, and we oversee more than 215,000 streetlights in the city of LA. We have our own dedicated crews that do all that maintenance and repair for the street lighting system. Our first slide over here, it's... I'm going to go through some of our latest improvements that the Bureau has been working on. One of our big ones is the LED conversion program, which we started back in 2009. Phase one of this program was completed in June 2013, in which we converted over 141,000 streetlights from old high-pressure sodium lights to the new LED lights, giving us an energy savings of 63.1%. That is equivalent to an annual reduction of 47,563 metric tons of CO2 reduction from the environment. And the energy savings from all these conversions amount to an annual savings of over $7 million just from the conversion alone, plus an additional $2 million from the repair and maintenance costs that have been eliminated from... By the use of the new LED technology. As we move forward with Phase 2, it is a four-year plan in which we're going to convert approximately 30,000 units. So far, we converted 15,000 units. And most of these are decorative and ornamental fixtures that we have throughout the city. A lot of them in the downtown area, and a lot of the residential neighborhoods where we have the old post-up lighting throughout the residential neighborhoods. Our second program, which is one of the latest technologies that also we're currently working on, is the Smart Pole colocation program. This slide gives you an overview of the locations throughout the city. If you get one of those paper copies, you might be able to see a little bit better, along with a picture of what the pole looks like. It is a, we call it a smart pole. On the right-hand side, you see some of the project benefits, such as strengthening city's communication coverage. The poles are more resilient to earthquake in high wind speeds. And also, the beauty about this project and program is that the antennas are actually housed within the pole. So you don't see the bulky antennas anymore hanging from the streetlights, but rather within the pole. It's a more streamlined approach. And the base of the pole actually eliminates the cabinet that would otherwise be installed as an above-ground facility near the sidewalk. So all of these benefits are provided by these smart poles that we have converted throughout the city. Last fiscal... By the end of this fiscal year, we're going to have approximately 100 of these installed throughout the city. We have currently nine in CD5. Most of them in major corridors. There's a couple in Pico, La Brea, and Fairfax. There's a number of those. You've probably seen them as you drive through your neighborhood. For next fiscal year, we're scheduled to do about another 200 throughout the city. And these locations are actually determined by the telecommunications carriers, where they see a need for their network. Those are the locations where these poles are installed. And all of them, of course, on major corridors throughout the city. Next slide is what we call Smart City Solutions. Next slide is what we call Smart City Solutions for the city. We're excited to be working on cutting-edge technology for, to make the city a greener city, and the use of a street lighting infrastructure to accommodate that, you know, has been something that we have been looking to do, starting with the EV charging stations. We have currently two pilot projects in this, in the downtown area, but by the end of this fiscal year, we're slated to install thirty locations throughout the city. In City Five, we have one location, which is going to be installed, I think, this week or within the next couple of weeks, and it's located on Hillgard and Strathmore in City Five. And we have placed these throughout the city, again, in major corridors, in commercial areas, and in business areas where people that have electric vehicles can drive up and park near a streetlight and actually charge their vehicle while they, you know, do business in the city, or actually spend time in the city and the different shops throughout those areas. Another program that we have is a solar-to-grid program, which actually installs solar panels on existing streetlights. And what these panels do actually is capture the sun's energy in the daytime and feed this energy back to the electric grid for use during high periods, periods of high demand. So actually, it goes back to the Department of Water and Power, where they can use this energy to send it throughout the area as needed. This year, we're going to complete about five-hundred installations. Actually, this number is, it's not quite accurate, but we started with a hundred-and-thirty-five at the beginning of the year. By the end of this month, we're going to have over five-hundred panels installed throughout the city. Most of these are in industrial and commercial areas of the city, so as to not, to interfere with the, with the character of the communities. So we're very careful to install these in areas where, where are not going to be of visual impact for the residents. Lastly, we have our remote monitoring system, which actually is a smart system that, and it keeps track of the streetlights throughout the city. We have installed approximately sixty-two-thousand throughout the city, and this devices, actually we call nodes, go on each of the streetlights in the city. And actually, we're able to detect any faults, any, anything wrong with the system. We're able to detect streetlight outages within, you know, a couple hours from happening. And this is a great feature that we're consistently, you know, installing throughout the city. So for this year, we're installing about another twenty-thousand, and we're, every year, we're going to continue to do so until we install, until all the streetlights, the new modern LED streetlights have, have this device. Other than that, you know, those streetlights that don't have this device, we are still relying on the public to report them via 311 or mobile app, My311, where you can report any light outages, or anything wrong with the, with the streetlight, any vandalism that you see, anything that's wrong with the pole or the streetlight, you can report it that way. I kind of wanted to go back on the, on the LED conversion program, just to give you some numbers. For District Five, we have converted eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-seven streetlights to LED, saving approximately sixty-seven percent, so it's even more than the sixty-three percent. And that translates to four-thousand-six-hundred metric tons of CO2 reduction from the environment, and approximately seven-hundred, seven-hundred-thousand in annual energy savings, just from the energy That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Fabian. Are there any questions from the members of the public on the Bureau of Street Lighting? Just want to make special recognition of our great Bureau of Street Lighting. We've been recognized nationally and internationally for the work on LED conversions and all the innovations, even earning the recognition of former President Clinton through his Clinton Global Initiative. So I want to thank the Bureau of Street Lighting for all of their great work. So thank you, Fabian, for your presentation. So we'll go ahead and receive that oral report, and moving on to our next oral report from the Bureau of Sanitation, Jose Garcia, presenting on Clean Streets, Los Angeles.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jose Garcia with the Bureau of Sanitation. It's funny, Councilmen, glad you're here, Commissioners, Bureau Heads. Nineteen eighty-eight, I started in West LA. My Friday route was right here around the corner. Brings back memories. Back in the day, we picked up trash by hand, and it was all, you took everything, everything you put out. Now it's all separated. So Mayor Garcetti believes, and we all believe in sanitation, come from the family, that everything you see out there in the streets belongs to us. So when we see trash, bulky items, illegal dumping, we take personal ownership of it. I know I do. So, living here in L.A., working here, anybody who visits here should be able to enjoy quality streets, quality neighborhoods, a good, a good interaction with the city of L.A. And our quality of life, people that want to invest, people that, you know, judge based on what they see out there. So we take a lot of pride in that, and keeping the streets clean, sidewalks, alleys, and just performing the day-to-day task of cleaning up the streets is L.A. San's responsibility. And Mayor's, Mayor Garcetti's, and the council office's commitment by investing in our program. So, prior to November two thousand and fourteen, we were just picking up black, green, and blue, and bulky items from your house, and we were given a challenge to develop a program. And under Directive Eight, Mayor Garcetti and the council office approved, we were responsible to implement a program, multi, multiple layers, to make it easy for the streets of L.A. to get cleaned, and using the L.A. Sanitation as the lead responsible agency. So, develop and deploy what we call strike teams, basically the guys that go out there, either in lightweight or mechanized, to get out there and clean up, you know, anything from small litter to ten tons of dirt inadvertently dumped out there for X reason. Some of the areas are high-impacted, a lot of alleys are used as dump cycles for anything from home repairs to commercial disposal, who don't want to pay the fees. Develop a program, basically a street-by-street indexing program, which basically grades the cleanliness of every street out there. And that, hopefully, drives the litter aspect of it, in the deployment of twelve-hundred-and-fifty ALBs, automated litter bins, which are the little black mushroom things you see on the corner, based on the foot traffic and the amount of small litter in some of these neighborhoods that we're assessing as we go out there and index them. The goal is to put five-thousand ALBs out on the street city-owned and serviced by L.A. Sanitation. And then, lastly, is to develop a database which records any trash can that's out there, regardless if it's a MTA, a cement trash can, or wrought iron sidewalk furniture, because of the maintenance of it. And then to develop a plan should those maintenance features phase out. In my experience, being in this business, it's a good idea, put a lot of aesthetically beautiful containers out there, and then, once the maintenance goes away, then the problems start, because nobody's taking care of them. So we've got a plan to, when that happens, to assist in the maintenance of them. So in the indexing program, it's basically a street-by-street, we drove every street, we've gone through several stages of it, developing a little bit of database, and then try to apply that to the strike teams as they go out there and try to incorporate OCB along with sanitation, and all of our resources and opportunities and programs that we have, and apply that all to addressing everything grid by grid. And although this is kind of an old slide, the program is currently in development, it's currently being assessed in how we're going to implement the next phase of it, which is trying to make everything a one, which is the best. Just a couple of snapshots, litter, L.A. Sanitation deals with homeless encampments, illegal dumping, if anything from small material to large material, and then our regular curbside bulky item programs. So, on a daily basis, we receive about nineteen-hundred requests for bulky items citywide. That, in a month, thirty days, it's about fifty-seven thousand service requests for bulky items. And you'd be surprised, there's a large number that go unreported, and that's what causes the blight. And we in Sanitation really would like the neighborhoods to take ownership of it, because when our drivers go out there, they don't intentionally miss a stop, they have an appointment that they have to meet. And if you get tired of jumping over the same couch, go ahead and report it. 311, the phone number's on the side of the trash can. If you don't do it, it'll stay there next week and then the following week. So we really encourage everybody to take a little part. 311, just take a, take a moment, the app works great, and it'll be on somebody's schedule for the following collection day. So, it's not that we're trying to avoid, but we have an appointment for those who are diligent and dedicated to using the service. So, again, this is kind of a little bit of an old slide. July first, I guess we start our fourth team, thanks to the budget process, which gives more resources to the streets, and we're able to get to everything twenty-five percent sooner. That's the theory. But anyways, we've been at it for a little bit, and we've learned along the way, and we've grown and bought, invested in resources and manpower to assist every council office. Council Office Five is a unique, goes from the Valley all the way to Hollywood, clear over to the 405, and that's a unique combination of different neighborhoods and the problems associated with that. So just so you know, when we plan homeless encampment cleanups, we, since I'm the coordinator of that, we kind of adjust so they're five and eleven, so they don't just cross the border and then come back and then cause a problem. We go in there, we clean the whole thing all in one blanket. That's the theory behind it. Everybody here takes a lot of pride in what they do. They really, trashmen are like Pac-Man, they just go out there and pick it up. So, trash receptacles, currently, we have about fourteen-hundred ALBs out, and some white wire baskets that we're trying to phase out. We have some adopt-a-baskets, along with the J.C. and Martin Outdoor, those are all the stationary ones at the bus stops that you see. When it's all said and done, there's going to be over twelve-thousand receptacle citywide to help with the litter abatement and litter, trying to curb the litter, so people have a place to throw it away, and people have a place to, well, just take pride in it, hopefully peer pressure. So, this is kind of a, anyways, if you have a neighborhood council here, we encourage you to just do what I say, and just report everything that's out there. Once it's on everybody's, once it's on somebody's appointment list, we will take care of it. One of the things about sanitation, having started here and learning the business for almost twenty-eight years, is that we don't stop until the route is complete. It has to happen, has to finish every day. We don't put a barricade, we don't put a cone, we don't come back tomorrow to finish that, it has to happen every single day. And so, with that, is, when you see a trash truck driver out there, he's diligent, he's focused, he has to complete his assignment, and when he breaks down, there's others to come and help him. And you can use the eight-hundred number, which is on every trash can, 311, and any one of those other features to report anything, and we get it, we put it on our schedule, and we're, again, like Pac-Man, we just go out there and pick it up. Actually, that's our motto, our motto, always picking up.
Thank you.
Any questions? Try to keep it short.
Are there any members of the public that have a question or want to address on the issue of sanitation? Yes, ma'am?
Any storm drain that's out there, I'll take the information, it should have a grade in front of it, and they're only supposed to release until, unless the weather is raining hard. But those are there for the protection of the, that whole, integrity of that whole piping system. So I'll take the information, and I'll get our sanitation. And as far as the sidewalks, or the gutter itself? The drains themselves, the storm drains, right?
Storm drains.
Yeah, that's sanitation. If you're talking about the actual gutter itself, that would be something street sweeping would be doing. But if you're talking about the storm drain itself, if you give me the range, I'll take care of it.
Thank you very much. And just, you can always call 311 for that as well, instead of, but we're happy to take down the information, and Jose will take care of that for you. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions? Yes, one more question, sir.
That's one of the, our director has implemented a 24/7 response, seven days a week. We have drivers on the weekends, and although we don't have 24/7, we have somebody on call.
Thank you. Commissioner Repinning, you had it come?
Sure, I just wanted to address, there was a time when we were experiencing longer-than-normal wait times at the customer care center, and our folks at Sanitation were very creative about finding a way to reduce that, and so, and we're very proud that we're open 24/7, which is even more than three-in-one. So, I know that our Bureau of Sanitation very much values customer service, as does the Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Great, yeah, and I want to say that customer service, certainly, as a board member, is my number-one concern and priority, and I'm very glad to hear constituents use the service and to know in fact that it is there. So, that's a very good thing.
Yes, oh, Councilman, correct?
I just wanted to ask a question on bulky items. I know you have a very set schedule to do pickups, but sometimes people come for an item at one home, and the home next door has a bunch of bulky items, and it just seems like it would be more efficient to occasionally grab those while you're in the immediate area, rather than wait for those to be called in.
My experience, if I picked up everything on my block, I would probably leave half of you upset at me, because I didn't make it to your, it's like an appointment for anything, a phone or cable. But the, moving forward, once technology catches up, the idea is that we would, a bulky guy would ID that location. It's not on his docket, but at least we'd be able to, we call it drop a dot. In other words, ID it, and then the MFBI guys that come behind it would be able to know exactly where all the locations are that weren't on that regular docket. So, the, it's moving in that direction, and anything that would have to get, need assistance or further assistance, or mechanized assistance, would then get forwarded to the Clean Streets group. So it's kind of like, check it once, check it twice, and then we, you know, we're going to get it all together. to get it all together.
So we're looking at some sort of system where the items that never get called in will still get picked up eventually?
Because you figure, our drivers are out there every day, and all five days of the week. And they see things that are not on their list, they can point them out, and so the next, the MFBI program that comes behind it can kind of subsidize that kind of stuff. So we're moving in that direction, technology is a little bit, is catching up to it, but that's the, kind of like the direction that we're going in.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jose. And so, moving on to our next oral report, we have the sidewalk repair program update from the Bureau of Engineering, Steve Chen.
Good evening, I'm Steve Chen, I'm the Street Improvement and Stormwater Division Manager with the Bureau of Engineering. I also oversee the sidewalk repair program, which is why I'm giving this presentation. Let's see here. Great. Our city engineer is Gary Lee Moore, and our deputy, chief deputy city engineer is Deborah Weintraub. But joined with me here today is Alfremata, Deputy City Engineer, and also Carl Nelson, who is the sidewalk program manager, so they're both here with me today. So here's a picture of a typical sidewalk that we like to see repaired because it's a safety issue, and we're there to improve the condition of the community. We estimate that the city has approximately eleven thousand miles of sidewalks, and of that eleven thousand, about five thousand, we think are in need of repair. So giving you just a quick background of how the sidewalk repair program started, it was back in February of twenty fifteen, where the council authorized sidewalk repairs adjacent to city facilities. So we had started off back then, and we have, Bureau of Engineering was designated as a program manager, we have support from Bureau of Contract Administration, Bureau of Street Services, as well as other, several other city departments. Since that time, we've repaired one hundred fifty-five, about one hundred fifty-five city facilities to date, which is equivalent to about twenty-eight miles of five-foot sidewalk, and that was over about twenty-two construction packages since last year. Fast forward to March of this year, the council has recently adopted a sidewalk repair policy, and in that policy, there's a bunch of items that we're currently working on. So the Bureau of Engineering is to prioritize and coordinate the repairs, and currently, the, I think, as mentioned previously, that it's the adjacent city property owner's responsibility to repair the sidewalk. However, the city will be doing a one-time fix of the sidewalk, and then releasing that responsibility to the adjacent property owner. And in that process, we're going to be doing a sidewalk inspection and certification process. Once the sidewalk is certified and inspected, the city will then warranty those sidewalk locations for a period of twenty years if it's a residential property, or five years for commercial properties. Along with that, we're also going to try to encourage those who want to get their sidewalk repaired within the first three years, basically to incentivize those who wish to have their sidewalk repaired earlier, and what we're, what the council has asked us to do is to implement a cost-sharing rebate program, and we're currently working on the details of that. That should be going live in the next few months, hopefully, but we're going to be basically sharing the cost of the repairs of the sidewalks. And along that, we're going to give, leave the permit fees to make it easier for residents who choose to partake in that program. We're also going to be preserving the urban forest while trying to maintain accessibility, and so this is a challenge of trying to make the sidewalks passable and safe, as well as maintaining a lot of the trees that are, the tree roots that are causing a lot of damage. We have a two-to-one tree replacement policy, so that is part of the effort to preserve the urban forest. Along with that, we're also going to be using city forces and private contractors to do, to construct the repairs. That would include small women and minority business owners, as well as giving opportunities to former gang members and transitional residents. Another thing we're looking at is to explore the use of alternative materials, that includes such things as porous concrete, maybe rubberized asphalt, some of the things that we're looking into at this point. We're also going to be initiating an environmental impact report for the program. These next few slides are just talking about MyLA3111. I know it's been mentioned previously in a few other presentations, but I'll just kind of go through it real quickly here. It's just a way, if you want to, if the citizens wants to make a request, they can go through MyLA311. You can either go through the website at lacity.org, or email us at threeoneone@la-city.org. Also can reach us through the MyLA311 app, and there's some screenshots of what it looks like, how to create a service request. And of course, the phone, you can dial three-one-one, or if you're outside of LA, you can call two-one-three-four-seven-three-three-two-three-one. I just want to show some photos of some, of areas that we've worked on here in Council District Five. Here's the first one, before and after photo of a curb ramp at the intersection of Comstock and Warnall. As you can see before, it's just a curb ramp, and it was not accessible to disabled, and we constructed a compliant ADA ramp there with a detectable worn surface. Another example here is in Council District Five, Battalion Eighteen, Fire District Sixty-One. Here, you can see, it's kind of hard to see maybe from this distance, but on the left side before picture, there was a non-compliant driveway, well, it's a driveway that goes up to the fire station, but it was a non-compliant sidewalk, so one of our requirements is to make those, the path of travel compliant. As you can see on the right side, there's a path of travel along the, over the driveway. So the requirement is that it has to be no more than two percent cross slope, and that's why we had to make that improvement there. One more example here is just a standard broken sidewalk, and as you can see before and after, this is in Palms Park, not too far from here, it's a cracked sidewalk, and afterwards you can see the new sidewalk. That's basically it, I can take any questions if there are any at this time.
Thank you very much. Steve, I'm sorry, the one question I wanted to make sure was addressed because it was asked earlier, was what is going to be the protocol for prioritizing the sidewalk repair requests?
So we are currently working on that right now. We've got requests from a lot of different sources, through council offices and through special requests, through disabled communities, so we're working on trying to prioritize that incoming. We're actually going to report back to council on how we're going to respond to those, the different requests that we have.
Okay, so, so, just to be clear, so should they contact the bureau, should they contact the council office, which is going to be the, or you're in the process of determining what that protocol is going to be?
Well, primarily, I think we prefer that the three-one-one is the primary way to submitting the requests, because they come through, they will get through us, and we will sift through them and prioritize them. But we also, you know, I can take requests here today as well, but also through the council offices, if there's any special needs, we can, we get requests from the council offices as well.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, I can't speak to why it took that long, but we can definitely take your information, and we'll look, we'll follow up and look into that.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
So that's one of the alternative sidewalk materials we're looking into, but at this point, we haven't come to a conclusion whether or not we can actually use that. I think Bureau of Street Services is also looking into that, to determine, they're doing some testing to see what would be something that we could actually implement on a larger scale. Again, we'll take a note of that, and we'll add that to our list. Again, it's, we have a lot of different locations to try to, try to, yeah, right. Okay, we appreciate that, and we'll take that location as well and follow up with that.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, yeah.
So, so the cost, the rebate program is really for those residents who wish to basically accelerate the repair and, and to get their sidewalk repaired sooner than, sooner in the program, within the first three years. So, the city is offering an incentive, a monetary incentive, to get it done sooner, and they'll be, you'll be given a certain amount of credit, I guess you could say, for certain non-compliant issues in front of your, in your sidewalk. And so, we haven't come out with the official policy on that, but we're still working on that, and that should be coming through council in the next few weeks probably. So, yeah. Right. Right, and that's, I think that, yeah, that's what we're looking at, is the worst locations, ideally that's how we would prioritize, the ones that impact most, the most citizens, the most, has the most transit, the most heavily traveled. That should be a high priority, I would say, if there's bad sidewalk in Westwood. Yeah. Right. Yeah, that's the thing, we, one of our goals is to make everything compliant with the ADA, so path of travel, having enough clearance for the disabled is something that we have to try to achieve, and that may require, in some cases, you know, relocation of utilities and things like that. But, again, it's, you know, we're trying to get to it as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your oral report, that will be received, Steve, thank you so much. And I neglected to actually cover our first oral report, which is, again, Jason Valencia on our graffiti abatement and community beautification services from the Office of Beautification. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Again, my name is Jason Valencia with the Office of Community Beautification. I am a community coordinator in the office. I have a very, very brief overview of what we do in the Office of Community Beautification. Our office specializes in graffiti abatement and community cleanups throughout the city of L.A. We have contracts with thirteen community-based organizations, those are nonprofits, such as Pacific Graffiti Solutions, they were here earlier. When it comes to graffiti abatement, as you can, pictures are kind of small, hopefully folks can see them. The top row are before, and the bottom row are after photos. The contractors use various means to remove the graffiti, water blasting, sand blasting, paint, chemical solvents, et cetera. The goal of graffiti abatement is to remove it as swiftly as possible, within forty-eight hours ideally, to maintain the aesthetic beauty of the communities. And the way, the ways that the contractors are, yeah, the contractors find out about graffiti in the communities is primarily through proactive work, they actively drive around the communities and look for graffiti to remove themselves. The second way is through MyLA311 and the council office. Council office, a lot of constituents call council offices, council offices then contact us. Also, MyLA311 is a very popular way to report graffiti. The, one of our other services that the Office of Community Beautification oversees and specializes in is the Clean Streets Initiative. As I mentioned earlier, the Clean Streets Initiative is an initiative through a directive, an executive directive Mayor Garcetti implemented or passed in two thousand and fifteen. The goal is to maintain the cleanliness of all streets in the entire city of L.A., and that includes bulky item removal, illegal dumping removal, weed abatement, and loose litter pickups. The thirteen community-based organizations that we have contracts with also do Clean Streets Initiative works, CSI work, in the communities, and we, they find out through that, they find out which, excuse me, locations to clean up through also proactive work, MyLA311 and the council office, and through sanitation. Our partners in sanitation are great at letting us know which areas in the city need to be Here are some more before and after photos, sorry that they're a little small and dark. And lastly, another main function of our office is volunteering. We actually have a large warehouse in downtown filled with tools, rakes, shovels, sidewalk scrapers, wheelbarrows, you name it. Our goal is to have that warehouse empty all the time, because if it's empty, that means tools are out in the community being used. Those tools are for your folks' disposal, and you folks can use them, borrow them whenever you want. Simply got to call us, contact us, and we'll get them out to you, whether you and your neighbors are doing a cleanup, church organization, whoever may be, they are for you folks to use. And here are some photos of, those are a few LUSD locations, actually, and one of them was with the council office, congress member's office, and the mayor's office. And to contact us, simply, to report graffiti, dial three-one-one, email threeoneone@la-city.org, online at mylathreeoneone.lacity.org, or the mobile app, MyLA311. To visit our office, laocb.org, facebook.com/laocb, Twitter, at la underscore OCB, and also you can visit us in our office, two hundred North Spring Street, room three fifty-six. And that is it, I left some of my business cards in the back, if you folks have any other questions, comments, concerns about graffiti removal or weed abatement. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Madam President.
Were there any questions from the member of the public for Jason? No, thank you, we will receive that oral report, and we go on to our final report for the evening, which is our project labor agreements and status update from our Bureau of Contracted Administration with Andrew Chung. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Chung, and I'm here on behalf of the Bureau of Contract Administration. Sorry, thank you. Good evening, my name is Andrew Chung, and I'm here on behalf of the Bureau of Contract Administration. Tonight, I will be presenting the fourth quarter, Project Labor Quarterly Report. I'd like to start off with a brief overview of the project labor agreement and its main goals. Sorry, I don't know how this works. Sorry. I don't know how this works.
Uh-oh.
Broken.
There we go.
Thank you. The project labor agreement, or PLA, is a partnership agreement between the city of Los Angeles, the trades, and contractors with three key objectives. The successful completion of city public works projects in a timely and economical fashion, with no work stoppages or labor disputes. Number two, the targeted hiring of city residents with an emphasis on providing a career path for youth and disadvantaged job seekers. And three, ensuring that all workers employed in city projects are paid the correct prevailing wage for the work being performed. In summary, the PLA makes good business sense. It creates jobs for city residents, and it protects workers. The project labor, the project labor agreement mandates three local hiring targets. 30% of all hires must be local residents, and 50% of all apprentices must be local apprentices, and 10% of disadvantaged workers, or sorry, disadvantaged hires, sorry, workers must be disadvantaged. Disadvantage refers to residents certified as suffering some form of economic disadvantage, such as being homeless, suffering from chronic unemployment, or lacking a high school degree or GED. Since the start of the PLA in 2011, there's been a total of 61 projects designated as PLA. The total dollar value of these projects is over $700 million. In terms of the hiring targets, which BCA uses to measure the success of the PLA, our current results are as follows. The local percentage, local hire percentage is at 41%. The local apprentice percentage is at 67%, and the disadvantaged percentage is at 24%. In summary, we're exceeding all PLA hiring goals by over 30%. The Bureau of Contract Administration uses the term "amount reinvested" to express the actual dollar amount in wages that the PLA has directly created for local residents and disadvantaged workers. To date, city PLA projects have created over 640,000 labor hours for residents. This equals $21 million of direct reinvestment into our communities. The West Los Angeles Interceptor Sewer Project is an example of a PLA project that took place in Council District 5. Work was completed at the end of February, and will extend the life of the sewer by 50 years, and the project created approximately 30 positions for local residents. So, residents interested in working on the city public works project can contact three independent job coordinators listed on this page. They work with contractors and BCA to place workers on city projects. For more information about the Bureau of Contract Administration, please visit BCA LA City website. This concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Are there any questions from members of the audience this evening? No? Thank you. And I want to thank our Bureau of Contract Administration for doing an outstanding job. They really do a phenomenal job to ensure that our contract opportunities really do extend our capacity in the economy to make it stronger, and we do have a lot of reinvestment, as you noticed, with our project labor agreement. So, it's a very successful tool that we've utilized to help ensure that we can contribute to our economy as well. Were there any additional comments? Oh, sure, Repening?
Just wanted to take a minute to thank our council member, Paul Kretz. He works really hard. You heard a lot tonight about how a lot of the areas that we work in have expanded, and that is in large part due to his advocacy for basic services as part of our city's, our city council's budget committee. Being on the budget committee is a lot of hard work. It's a lot of time for the members, a lot of hard work by staff, but it's really important, and we very much appreciate his advocacy for public work services.
Yes.
I second that emotion.
Yes. Yes. Commissioner Jacinto.
Thank you. Joel Jacinto, the new guy on the Board of Public Works, I've been around for about 10 months, but happy to be the liaison for the 5th district, and appreciate the councilman and his staffs and Joan's support and partnership. I've been able to do a couple of site visits. Philip and I were just looking at the Olympic and Selby Tunnel to take a look at public safety issues. So, I'm completely accessible. I live down the block in CD 11, but I went to school in CD 5, and it was here where about 10 years, for about 10 years ago, raised our kids on sports and recreation. So, we greatly value this venue and the great leadership that we have in CD 5. So, I'm here for you. Give me a call.
Joel. Thank you. And council member, I would just like to conclude with our thanks for hosting us here this evening and welcoming us to the district. Since our appointment to the Board of Public Works, we've made every effort to try and be accessible, but you have definitely included us in so much of a collaboration to ensure that we can help be responsive to all the communities' needs throughout the city of Los Angeles. And so, we want to thank you for being here with us tonight. You are, I will say, I think, one of a few members that have actually stuck through the entire course of our meeting to hear all of the concerns, and you are to be applauded for that. So, I want to thank you for that.
Well, I appreciate, and I'm honored by you not only inviting me, but coming into the district and coming where I grew up and played baseball throughout my young life, here in Cheviot Hills Park. So, I appreciate you all being here and all your good work that you do throughout the year, which is reflected in all the great reports that we heard today.
Thank you. So, seeing no other, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you all to the residents for coming here this evening and being a collaborator with us to help resolve a lot of these issues. That's what we're here for. And Mr. Executive Officer, have we cleared our agenda this evening?
Yes, you have.
So, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, councilman. And as always, we made it through. 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 We made it through.